Motion to reconvene in regular meeting of the Provisal Township Board of Education.
Um.
Second. Ms. Smith, please call the role. Ms. Valero.
Aye.
Ms. Stapleton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Morris.
Aye.
Dr. Fisher.
Aye.
Ms. Barbein.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Carey.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its liberty, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Smith, please reposition the statement.
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college, careers, and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comments. The Board will receive public comment from any individuals present this evening and have submitted a request to address the Board prior to established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes, and according to Board Policy 2230, we believe that all participants, all participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website. Ms. Smith?
Claudia Van Diver. Oh, that's quick. Okay. Um, I don't know where to go. It's my first meeting.
Ms. Valero, please, welcome.
Okay. Hello, my name is Claudia Van Diver. A little bit back on history. Hi. I'm an adult educator of over twenty years. I'm a family medicine physician, and I'm a long-term Maywood resident. I came here today just to bring awareness to some plans that the village has to turn its whole entire district, uh, community into a TIPS district, and how that's going to adversely affect the funding of education throughout the Provisal Township. I'm going to be very succinct and to the point. My website is the Maywood Watchdog. It's an educational informational platform that I put together to bring awareness to the community. So in the next couple of days, I'm going to be posting original video content to talk about the gentrification of Maywood via TIPS, and then also to break down the TIPS, which stands for Tax, Income, and Financing Means. But the long story short, just think of it like this. Each town in Proviso pays their fair share of taxes. Would you have a problem if for the next twenty-three years, the village of Maywood legally is not able to contribute to the education funding of the Provisal Township system? If the TIPS passed, that's exactly what's going to happen. Not only are the schools going to be defunded, the libraries are going to be defunded, the park districts is going to be defunded. So long story short, next time, because I'm going to be an advocate coming to these meetings on a regular basis, I'm going to bring educational information. My website is going to be very thorough in breaking it down, but it affects all of us because you know if Maywood doesn't pay their fair share, who's going to pay the difference? The other towns are going to have to pick up the slack. And ultimately, with the cuts at the federal level, you know how funding is important for education, and everybody should pay their fair share. So once again, my platform is the Maywood Watchdog and Claudia Van Diver, and I'll bring educational information next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Watson.
PD Board.
PD.
This is my board. My name is James Watson. I am a food service worker at the Brown East for over two years. I am speaking on behalf of newly unionized workers, food service workers, professional personnel with the Brown East Staff Council. We stand here before you today to ask you to vote yes to language changes to current Brown East staff by voting yes. You are helping give the food service personnel access to consterators, constituators in behalf, as well as a voice of, worth to participate in the decision-making process that directly affects the livelihoods who would like to thank you, thank you representative for District 209, Superintendent Hill, Brown East Support Staff, Council President Sholimji, and Illinois Federation of Teachers for the collaboration. We are proud to stand united before you today and ask that you vote yes to our contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can put some photos from this project. Is there any recognition today?
No, but I did want to mention recognition is something that we're doing in the schools. At each of the schools, we, on a monthly basis, we're going to be implementing a student of the month program. So while we may not always have recognition here at the board, we know that there will be recognition for our students at the schools. We did give our principals the autonomy to create the program in any way that they see fit for their buildings, and we're, you know, ecstatic that on a monthly basis we can honor the kids for each of them.
Reports of Communications Department, the Board President. So I didn't want to just talk to everybody today, so I just wanted to give a few reminders of upcoming events and things like that. The district sent out an email about the Illinois State Board of Education accepting nominations for the 2026 Those Who Excel and Teacher of the Year Award. So I wanted to encourage everyone to kind of think of your favorite teacher in Proviso, go to the website, fill it out. It would be amazing if we had a teacher from our district that was the Teacher of the Year. Even on a staff, family, students, community members, and organizations. Uh, the next thing is the Bridging the Gap Parade is this Saturday. We have four different floats. We're going to have each school represented, so it'd be awesome to have all of our community, parents, students, staff come out and watch the parade and catch candy. We're going to be throwing candy.
We will be.
Lots of candy. Uh, the last reminder is for, uh, the district sent out several different surveys, so it's important for everybody to fill them out. There's a survey about our forty million dollar sports complex at West. The more, you know, the community engagement and opinions we have, the better we can make a thorough decision about how that moves forward. And also the strategic plan. So there's lots of engagement opportunities for parents, students. So please fill out the surveys, go to social media with the district's website, click on those links, and fill out those surveys because we want to hear what everybody has to say. So that's it. Thank you.
Yep. So moving into the Superintendent's Board, I'm going to defer my time to Dr. Hill for her business office update.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First up, what I presented to the Board of Education and Superintendent is the Administrator and Teacher Salary Compensation Report. Per the Illinois School Code, this must be presented to the Board at a regular Board meeting prior to October 1st. So this is just simply information only. This report was completed as a FY25. Next up, we have the Treasures Report. As we all know, there is a delay in tax collections throughout Cook County, uh, which explains why our revenue is low for the first two months. Um, we hope to receive our revenue from our tax collections hopefully October or November, so stay tuned. Um, there's not a definitive date, it's set in stone as of yet. In reference to our expenditures for a two-month period for July and August, we have expended twelve percent of the budget thus far. Are there any questions regarding the Treasures Report? Next up, we have our bill list, a hefty document. Are there any questions regarding the bill list?
Dr. Hug, one, one question.
Yes.
Do we have a preference for, for school supplies, whether it be Amazon or Staples? Because I see Amazon, uh, ebbs and flows in each, each month's bill list. Does there a preference? Do we guys like?
Yes, there is a preference. So it all depends on the items from a specified department. They determine if they, um, would receive, get their materials either from Amazon or Staples. So if they want it like within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you know, they will probably go through Amazon. But Staples also offers the same setup and reference to time. So it just all depends on what the department prefers.
And do we get discounts through Staples or?
Yes, we are part of their system, their co-op system, and so we do have discounts as well. And we also have, um, they extended our credit with Amazon. Uh, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had been paused on that because we weren't receiving the best, um, credit amount for a district of this size. So they have increased it, and so now, um, staff members are permitted to go back to Amazon and place their orders. Are there any other questions? Okay. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on, um, we had a tremendous game the last Saturday with the East and West, and it, and I've been drawn to see that the principals are sitting next to each other. They may have, you know, they love in this moment, especially the one in the middle, but you know. I do want to point to the picture on the right. He was still smiling after the game, even though, I mean, it was a hard-fought game and they, you know, West did lose, um, but I don't think anyone lost because our community came out in full pride and spirit. And I wasn't at the previous games, but from what I was told is that it was a great turnout, better than years in the past. Um, we were able to, you know, reunite and get our, our alumni clubs, our alumni is, um, involved. We offered free admission, we offered free food, um, and you know, what I was most excited about was our kids got to be able to play in a stadium that was completely filled on both sides. And I know that's something that has not happened in quite a while, so I'm very appreciative of this community. Um, I want to thank Christie and Cory and Gail, Stephanie Garza and her team because they did a lot of work, our facilities team, our principals, our athletes. They showed tremendous, um, sportsmanship throughout the game. I know it got a little heated, there was a lot of energy towards the end because, you know, it really did come down to that last quarter and the last few minutes. Um, but they showed what it really meant to be a Proviso student, and it was, they, they carried themselves with dignity and pride throughout the rest, throughout the entirety of the game, um, and really put on a great show for us. We had a great, um, return the, the very first play of the game. I don't know who number three is wrong, I hadn't meant to ask, but I know that that's, I believe, the second one of the season.
Zaven Burge.
What's that?
Zaven Burge.
Zaven Burge. So, you know, just a tremendous athlete, a great athlete out there. And, you know, West, uh, or sorry, East did prevail ten to eight in a, in a period exciting game. And so we were looking to just continue this, 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 this tradition, but we also want to look for more ways to engage our community, not just in sports, but in everything we do. So the Bridging the Gap Parade this Saturday is a great opportunity. There's homecoming, um, for East the following weekend, so there's a lot of opportunities for community to get engaged. Um, looking, and then talking about, um, homecoming and thinking about the end of the year, we did have a senior night, um, this past Thursday at East and West. There's going to be a senior night on September seventeenth for PNSA. And at these, um, at these events, we talked about the expectations for seniors so that we can make sure that we're holding them accountable to certain expectations that they can participate later in the year. And so these expectations that I'm showing you, we've talked about this in the community as a whole, I am going to bring it to you next month for approval. And although it's not necessarily something that we typically approve, I just want to make sure that we're all aligned and, um, on board with the expectations that, that we're setting forth around academics, behavior, and attendance. Um, as Barbara, uh, President Barbara had mentioned, we are in the midst of a, of building out a new strategic plan. We have had, to this date, fourteen unique opportunities to, to hear from stakeholders. So we, we've been in person at each school. We had a virtual session for West yesterday. We have been in the schools, talking to students during their lunch periods. And over the summer, um, in the month of July, we've initially had this initial kickoff, or a soft kickoff, with two full-day meetings with other teachers, um, that were very well attended, to start with some information and some feedback. Um, in the future, we're going to, we have additional, um, we have additional virtual meetings. We're going to be meeting with our teachers during their planning, prep, and, and duty periods. Um, we're going to be going out to our feeder schools and meeting and talking to future parents in those schools. Um, we'll be talking to mayors and going out into the city. So all in all, we'll have fifty different opportunities to hear from stakeholders as we're building out this plan. We also, as President Barbara had mentioned, have surveys, and, um, so we have a survey for community members, we have a survey for parents, um, specific to the strategic plan. We will, in the future, launch a survey for teachers and also a survey for students. Um, and speaking of the surveys, I just wanted to, um, discuss the platform that we're using. We're not doing Google Forms or Survey Monkey. We're using an organization or program called Thought Exchange. And so the difference between Thought Exchange is that you can really start engaging differently with your community. So it does the traditional reporting and, and surveying that we're used to, but it also gives, um, participants an opportunity to see, um, what other people are saying and what thoughts, that's where the Thought Exchange name comes from, what thoughts they have, and then they can start, you know, other people can start reading these thoughts and then writing the thoughts. So it gives us an understanding of how the entire community is feeling about certain things. Um, and then there's a lot of data analytics that we go into this. So it's going to help us really make sure that what we're putting forward is, is what, what our community felt was important to be in our plan. You know, there's, there's strong importance for doing this, and the reason that I'm spending so much time growing so deep into the community is that when we build this plan for what the next five years will, will be, and it's approved by the Board, the expectation is we don't deviate from that plan. Our goals should remain the same. Um, pathways to get to those goals may shift depending upon, um, feedback that we get as we're going through this plan, but we need to be able to, to draw a line in the sand and to say, no new things. This is what we're doing, and we are going to make sure that what we do, we're going to do well, and we're not going to be distracted by the shiny things that are out there or the different ideas. Like, we are saying, our community has come together and said, this is what we want to see happen in Proviso over the next five years, and here's where we expect to be if we get there. And I understand that this plan will help, um, inform my own personal evaluation and the valuation of the staff, um, that works, um, under this Board of Education. Um, as Jackie mentioned, the Bridging the Gap Parade is September thirteenth. Uh, the parade kicks off at ten. The lineup begins at seven for board members. Staff members, we will have a show from Proviso East. We can take you from Proviso East, I believe, at seven thirty, so you can leave your cars there, and then, um, you can walk the parade, and then when it, and when the parade ends at Proviso East, it will be where your car is. We'll also have a Community and Resource Fair from twelve PM to four PM. Um, excited to mention that we have upgraded our phone system. I don't know if you've been on our phone system in the last few days, um, but you will hear now a live human voice, and that human voice will speak in English and in Spanish. And so our previous phone system was a robotic voice and it was only in the English language, so we're providing opportunities for our Spanish-speaking families to be able to engage in our phone system and understand how to get to the people that they need to get to if they have questions or need to leave messages. Um, now I would turn this over to Dr. Kermis, who is going to talk about her new department. Um, as she is the Deputy for School Improvement, and we have an entire school improvement team. Before she begins, I just would like to remind the Board that this is, this, this entire department, and all of her positions that, um, you'll, that we'll talk through today were part of the reorganization that was approved this past spring. As you may remember, as you may recall, this was a fairly neutral budget for us. We did not see a significant increase in our overall budget based on this new organizational structure due to some postations and some shifts in, in personnel. Um, and as we are filling these out, for her department in particular, for Dr. Kermis' department in particular, she, you know, we're not fully staffed. And so now, as we are fully staffed, I would want Dr. Kermis to provide an opportunity to you to talk through the goals of the School Improvement Department and the, the different roles and what they do. So, Dr. Kermis, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
What you see here is, uh, as the Superintendent indicated, the section of the organization chart that was approved, uh, last May. Uh, and while it is great to see boxes and titles and names on the chart, I think it's even better to talk about the work. And so I'm going to spend just a few minutes, uh, sharing a little bit about our purpose as a department, and also then spending a little bit of time talking about each role and the particular responsibilities that each member of our school improvement team has, and how all of those things really come together to drive, uh, to drive significant school improvement that is holistic and transformative. And that really is the primary purpose of our department. Our department exists to transform the schools. We're going to do this through a system of collaborative efforts that move us toward instructional excellence, that increase the leadership capacity in our buildings, and ultimately that advance equity through interrogating and redesigning the systems that we have so that they support our students and families first. On the next several slides, I'll share the key work of each member of the team, and I have to warn you, you are going to see a lot of words. But don't worry, I am not going to read that to you. But I think what this reflects...
So I'll have you advance or you edit?
I have it.
Sorry.
Uh, what this reflects is the complexity and the nuance that is involved in a coordinated system of school improvement. This is not easy work. If it was, we would have figured it out already. And so my role is largely around alignment and coherence of all of our systems. It is also my responsibility to support and develop our school leaders, and that includes principals, other building administrators, and department chairs. To coordinate across all of the teams in schools and all of the teams here at the district. To monitor our work, to make sure we have systems in place to collect the data we need, to practice continuous improvement, and to hold ourselves and one another accountable. And I serve as the primary connection point between schools and the district office. And we're so lucky to have two amazing parent advocacy and engagement specialists, Cory Hogs at East and Gail Hibler at West. These incredible women build partnerships, elevate parent voices, make sure that we are understanding and meeting the needs of our families, and support environments that are welcoming and supportive for all. We know that strengthening homeschool connections fosters shared accountability, and without shared accountability, you can't have holistic school improvement. So the work of working with parents and understanding how, how we can best serve them is not a separate extra nice-to-have. It is core school improvement work. We're also thrilled to have Ms. Sia Aldens on our team. She's currently the Director of Professional Development and Performance Management. She ensures that we have and implement a high-quality, evidence-based, legally-compliant evaluation system, and she makes sure that all of the professional learning that we offer is aligned to district goals. Because we have so much work to do, we have a lot of learning to do. Because we have a lot of learning to do, we cannot afford to waste a single minute of the most precious commodity that we have, and that is time, on anything that is not directly related to improving the education that we provided to our students. And so that's what Sia holds us all accountable for, using the time that we have to develop the capacity of our people in the best possible ways. Our most recent hire is Dr. Olympia Bahena, who recently filled our final vacancy to complete our team. She's the Director of Instructional Framework and Support, and she will focus one hundred percent of her time, sorry, one hundred percent of her time and energy and talent on improving instruction. She'll do this by making sure we are intentional and consistent as we implement the Proviso Instructional Framework. She will put particular emphasis on supporting our department chairs because as the teacher leaders closest to instruction, they are the best positioned to have an immediate impact on instructional practice in our schools. And one of my favorite things about the school improvement team is that we have both new talent and we have longtime Proviso heroes like Dr. Thomas. And Dr. Thomas is our Coordinator of Alternative Learning Opportunities, which means that she oversees and supports all alternative learning pathways, which requires a lot of collaboration and a lot of monitoring. And she also directly leads our district's evening school program to ensure that we are expanding access to learning for all. Finally, we have Dr. Latoya McIntosh, who's here. And Dr. Bahena is here as well. Sorry, I should have headed away earlier. Um, who was elevated from a school-based assistant principal role to lead the district's MTSS counseling and social work. She makes sure our approach to MTSS is data-driven, evidence-based, and collaborative, intentional, and preventative. She also supports our college and career readiness activities, collaborating both within the schools and with community partners. Ultimately, she does this all to, to strengthen our student outcomes both now and in the future. So that is the entire team, and as you know, and as Superintendent Mo had said, um, all of that work I described really happens in schools. And so while we are district office people on the employee count, uh, we are really, we will be in schools and we will be deep in this work of improving, uh, the educational systems. And the work we're doing, one of the things we're doing right now is engaging with principals and department chairs to lead, um, district-wide cycle of learning focused on the first components of our instructional framework, learning objectives, and daily formative. And our goal by the end of this cycle, which we started, um, probably about three or four weeks ago, uh, is for a hundred percent of teachers to be able to implement learning objectives and daily formatives at a Level Three on our district guidance tool that was developed by teachers. We also are looking for students to be able to understand what, what they are learning and to be able to explain specifically, not just what they are learning, but also why it's important and how they will show mastery by the end of the lesson. And those are the components in our guidance tool for what a high-quality learning objective is. So a learning objective in a classroom really has those three parts every time. Any questions?
Dr. Kermis, I have one question. So apart from, uh, a hundred percent of the teachers will be able to implement learning
So apart from 100% of the teachers will be able to implement learning objectives at Level 3, what other metrics are we, have we established that we're tracking against?
Yeah, so as we go through the year and the rest of the instructional framework, we're really tracking against, against what is in that framework. And so as we go through the year, we'll add more and more metrics as we go. So for right now, these are the things that we're focusing on. But the next learning cycle will be on focused instruction. And after that, we'll work through the rest of the metrics. But learning objectives seems really simple, but it's actually three pages on our guidance tool. Because it's about having a strong objective. It's about teachers actually explaining that objective effectively to students and checking to make sure that they understand. And then it's about students actually understanding it and being able to demonstrate that they do in fact know what they're learning, why it matters, and how they're going to show mastery. So it seems like a small thing, but to do it well is actually, is actually complex.
I have a question about the learning objectives. So what kind of training does a teacher get in order to meet this goal? Is it one-on-one time with the department chairs? Like, what kind of training are they receiving for that?
Sure. There's sort of, I think, three different modalities of training and support. The first was that we did a district-wide rollout at one of our Wednesday morning PLCs. So while it was district-wide, it happened in each of the buildings with a live facilitator. And so there was first an introduction to what is the guidance tool, what are the expectations? During that session, we had teachers practice crafting objectives, talk to one another, and give each other feedback. But it's mainly about, this is the expectation. This is what we're doing from now until six weeks from now when this learning cycle ends. And so that was the first thing, just level set for everybody, all at once, same message to everyone. Next, teachers worked in their department teams facilitated by their department chairs to do some additional sort of unpacking of the expectations, unpacking of the standards, practice writing objectives, giving each other feedback. And so there was that smaller group opportunity to continue and expand on the learning and make it specific to that content area. And then additionally, department chairs are going in and visiting to see implementation and practice in action and providing that one-on-one individual coaching. So it's really three opportunities for teachers to learn and grow in their practice.
Any other questions? So needs to say, we're really excited about Dr. Kermiss and the team that she's been able to put together and know that, you know, regardless of what, you know, Alex or, I'm sorry, Mr. Ashoff or Dr. Alvarez or Dr. Hill, regardless of what the other deputies are doing, we know that there is a consistent and constant presence within our schools and that we're also, you know, asking our principals, our assistant principals, and our deans to also be in classrooms with the expectation and hope that each teacher is visited in a, you know, in what we call learning tours. They're visited each week. So we're making sure that we're getting feedback to our teachers. The feedback is consistent because we are trainees in the administrative team. And so we want to make sure that the feedback that we're providing to teachers, regardless of who is giving it, is aligned. And so we're excited about the work that she's doing. And I know that it is, it is a tough job, but we have the right person here. Moving on, in the last part of my superintendent update is about embracing our differences, traveling art exhibit that we have going on right now. This installation here, we have 25 pieces that we have them here at PMSA. We did think about moving them around the district, but we thought that we would keep it here essentially located. We do not own these. They're on loan from Professor Kieran Church of Western Springs. And teachers are recruiting kids throughout to look at the pieces, vote on their favorites, and look at that feedback back to the organizers. I do want to thank Board Member Ocampo. He was the one that introduced this to us and made that connection. And now our school community is benefiting from it. So thank you, Mr. Ocampo, Board Member Ocampo. And please, if you have time tonight, feel free to go to the building and see the exhibits. You can see some of them here in this room tonight. And with that, that would be the end of my superintendent's report.
Are we on the first floor?
No, they're throughout the building.
Throughout the building?
Yeah.
Like an Easter egg hunt?
What's that?
Like an Easter egg hunt?
Yes. So moving on to the agenda, we have the information items. Yeah, sorry. So first up is our graduation ceremony at UIC.
Good evening. Professor Barban, Vice President Morris, and Secretary Smith, and Board Members and Community. Hello, hello. My name is Alex Ashoff. I am Deputy Superintendent for Academics. Your first information I have for tonight is graduation. So we have graduation at UIC, taking a look at performing this on May 23rd, which we recognize is Memorial Day weekend. We worked very, very hard with UIC to find other dates, and that is, that is the available date. And we've been performing our graduation at UIC for a number of years now. We have extensively looked at other options, but this is the venue that best fits our needs to make sure that we can provide a high-quality graduation ceremony for all of our families and students that want to celebrate everyone on this momentous day. The financial impact is a cost of $50,000, $5,500. And this is right in line with past costs as well.
Any major changes contractually from last year or any...
No, no, no major contractual changes at all. It's very stable, typical of what we saw from prior years with UIC.
I'm sure parents are already thinking, do we know the rotations again?
We will get it out soon.
Mr. Valmo.
Very important, yes. It was dependent on all the outcomes that he was given. All right, next, Alex, I believe you have the next one as well.
All right, and next up is our academic programs and course catalog update. So for this school year, we are not looking at making any substantial updates to our academic programs and course catalog. With this, we have moved up our timeline. So parents out there that are listening to this, the idea of working with your students and taking a look at the courses that we do offer at Proviso Township and having conversations with your students, because beginning is early as October. So in next month, our counselors will be meeting with our students and starting to look at selecting those courses. Part of the reason why we're not looking at making any major changes, we do want to take the time, be very intentional about any additional courses that we may want to offer, and then making sure that we provide the necessary time to find the texts and support with written curriculum. Be very intentional and thoughtful on that work and engage as many individuals within our district on any changes to those programs and courses. So knowing the short timeline we have with the course selection process in very specific as to not making any substantial changes. You will notice that the IB courses are removed from there. Partly that was because this school year, those first initial layer of courses that students would start in their junior for the International Bachelorate courses are not running due to those courses not being selected throughout the township. We do have students finishing up the program this year in what they call DP or Full Diploma II or courses. So we do have those now finishing, but there weren't any courses running this junior, which then we would have the second layer of courses the following year. So just naming that and bringing that to your attention.
I have a question. And I'm asking because I know our K through 8 district did implement some sort of curriculum regarding climate change or environmental, goodness, I assume something along those lines. And so I believe it was for this 2026, '27 school year. So I think it was from state, like the state to state level. I don't know if it was a requirement or a suggestion or some learning all of these things. I might write something and share it with you.
Please, stay ahead.
And hopefully that could be maybe the one small opportunity we have that school year.
Thank you, we'll look for that. We do have upcoming meetings with all of our foundation schools. So working very closely with Ms. Angela Moreno, who was our Director of Curriculum, meeting with all of our foundation schools to work on an articulately credit. So the idea that setting some guidance around a student taking, for instance, Innovative Math 1 as an eighth grader and making sure that we have processes in place to award and provide that credit at the high school level, much like what we have with our dual credit, I'm sorry, dual degree program with TRICAM, making sure that we have also similar agreement with our foundation schools. So if we get that, then we can have those conversations and we'll meet with their curriculum directors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we moving into approval items? Ready?
We are.
All right, are you ready everybody? All right. Item 12, may I have a motion to approve a piece fiscal year '26 budget in the amount of $9,331,148 as presented?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Item 13, may I have a motion to approve the purchase of Spanish-language and vision math textbooks from Sevaz?
Yes.
In the amount of $44,128.8 cents as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Item 14 is being tabled. Item 15, may I have a motion to approve the revised 2024, 2027 Support Staff Council Collective bargaining agreement as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Item 16, may I have a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the PTU regarding tuition reimbursement and post-hire advancement on the salary schedule as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Item 17, may I have a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of agreement for the PTU regarding the creation of the PEL school nurse position as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Item 18, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the August 12, 2025 Board of Education meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Epstein.
You said Epstein?
Epstein.
Okay. Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye. Motion carried.
Item 19, may I have a motion to approve the bill submitted to the Board and dated September 9, 2025 in the amount of $5,323,474.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye. Motion carried.
Item 20, may I have a motion to approve the September 9, 2025 Personnel Report including the hiring, resignation, separation, staking positions, and leaves of absences?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the room. Ms. Malinero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Motion carried.
Ms. Smith, can you please read the FOIA report?
There have been three FOIA requests received by the district before your request was submitted by Justin Wimbing, Sherri Reed, and Jacob Plaza. All three of those requests are still being processed on the district due to the time of council middle.
Thank you. Old business. I have, we discussed at the last meeting, the IAFB delegate and Dr. Fisher has shown interest. I know we don't have to officially vote on it, but if we're all good with Dr. Fisher being their delegate for 2025 year? Yes, some of that's okay. Okay, and then Dr. Fisher, please register and help you with that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other old business? Hearing none, new business? Hearing none? Did we have a...
I just want to have one comment. So this is, this is our first board meeting since the start of the school year, if I'm not mistaken, correct. So I just want to commend the district leadership and leadership at the schools, at the buildings for a smooth start to the school year. I commend you all for the hard work for the fourth over the summer and at the beginning of the school year. So kudos to you, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of adjournment at 8:21 p.m.?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I think that's everything.